Good evening. This fifteenth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Shana Tova, Happy New Year to all of our Jewish neighbors. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Baltimore City Fire Department Chaplain Avery Thurman Senior in honor of Fire Prevention Week. Chaplain Thurman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Please bow your heads as we go before the Lord. Lord Father in heaven, we thank you, Lord God, for this occasion. We thank you, Lord God, for the individuals that are currently in court, Lord Father, that will set the course for this city. We, Lord God, ask you that you open up our minds and our hearts to be receptive, Lord Father, to the creativity that you will put in their hearts. Allow them to be resourceful, Lord God, with everything you put in their hands. But more importantly, Lord God, allow them to work with a motive of love, with a motive that creates a legacy, Lord God, of success that those who are coming after us, Lord God, will celebrate the things we do today. Maybe not take this opportunity, Lord Father, lightly because the change that's being made today because of your favor that's on this room will change the course of the city. Will make monumental statues that would affect young women and young men, Lord Father, that will create opportunities and put them on paths of futures they could not imagine. So right now, Lord God, may every individual in this room be blessed with your divine hands. Open up their creativity, their ingenuity, Lord God, and allow, Lord Father, them to be used in a way that they can only imagine. Do it right now for the betterment of the citizens, for the betterment of the city, and to set an example for the world. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain Thurman, and thank you for the work you do to support the women and men of the Baltimore City Fire Department. We appreciate you. All right, Councilman Blanchard will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you all. The clerk will now call the roll.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum with council members McCray, Conway, and Glover, being absent.
Please note, Councilman Jones is here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journals for the September fifteenth meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes.
Without objection, the journals will be adopt-- well, sorry. Without objection, the journals will be adopted. Hearing none, the journals will be adopted. One bill adopted without the mayor's signature can be found on page two of the agenda. We now move on to executive nominations. Madam Clerk.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-five-six Jonathan DeWor, member Baltimore City Veterans Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-five-seven Cameron Askew, member Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Commission on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-five-eight Thalia Booker, member Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-five-nine Caleb Kralansik, member Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-six-zero Marceline White, member Board of Consumer Protection and Business Licensing Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-six-one Michael Stewart, member Board of Consumer Protection and Business Licensing Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-six-two Brina Furman, member Board of Consumer Protection and Business Licensing Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA type two-five dash zero-zero-six-three Ryan Hargrave, member Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. Now we move on to bills being introduced. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-five dash zero-zero-nine-nine Supplementary Municipal Telephone Exchange Fund Operating Appropriation, Municipal Telephone Exchange Service one-three-three Telecommunications, one million four hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of providing a supplementary Municipal Telephone Exchange Fund Operating Appropriation in the amount of one million four hundred thousand dollars to the Municipal Telephone Exchange Service one-three-three Telecommunications to provide funding for a series of one-time improvements to help upgrade the city's call center, support ongoing telework technology, increase wireless phone security, and support upgrades at the courthouse and Pratt Library and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, council president on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-one-hundred Children and Youth Fund Updates for the purpose of updating the processes and procedures by which the fund may disperse grants, altering the composition of the Board of Directors, requiring a certain report, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the administration of the Children and Youth Fund. Lead sponsors, Parker, Bullock.
Chair, this is Councilmember Parker.
Mr. President, thank you, colleagues. This bill is intended to provide updates to the existing ordinance that governs and supports the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund to ensure that the law aligns with current operational realities as that fund has grown and that organization has evolved and that B C F is best positioned to meet its vital mission to fund and build the capacity of youth-serving, community-based organizations in the city. This legislation aligns with and strengthens the fund's hard-won success in youth leadership, technical assistance for grantees, transparency, and community engagement in governance and grant-making processes, things that make B C F truly unique and have been a part of the vision of B C F from the very beginning when this council took steps to create it. We all know that we're living in times in which our communities and trusted organizations and groups that they rely on are under attack through funding cuts or threats to their existence from the federal government. Housing cuts, food cuts, education cuts, healthcare cuts, immigration enforcement that tears apart families, book banning, hostility towards our G L B T Q neighbors all impact our communities but especially fall heavily hard on young people in our neighborhoods and in our city. Closer to home, there are plenty of loud and persistent voices who can't look at the young people of the city without finding fault or finding some way to criticize or looking at them as some sort of detriment when we're speaking about them in negative and dehumanizing dishonest ways. But in Baltimore, our Baltimore, in our communities, in our schools, and here in our city government, we celebrate and support young people of all backgrounds and throughout all parts of our city. Their ideas, their energy, their passion, their creativity are at the heart of the transformation of our community and the renaissance of our city that our council president speaks about so much. Our mayor has been steadfast, our council president has been steadfast, this council have all been steadfast over many years in that in this commitment to our young people when it comes both to policy like this and the resources that we dedicate to young people in the city. So it's even more important at this time that we, as a city council, support community-based organizations, especially those often excluded from existing funding options that advance racial equity, intergenerational leadership, community ownership, and collective decision-making. We, as a council, I say we, I've only been here since December, but we, as a council, collectively in our history and some of you from the very beginning have been involved since 2015. Over that time, B C F has moved from a concept, from a vision, or something that just kind of showed up every once in a while in a council hearing into a dynamic, growing, transformative organization active across our entire city. And we've seen that impact, you've seen that impact, across our districts and with our young people. Its work makes a difference every day. This legislation gives us a chance, as a council, to catch up legislatively on the back end of legislation that hasn't changed in a few years, even as B C F has grown and evolved in its mission and its programs. This legislation gives us a chance to catch up, our city code to align with and better support the growth and development of B C I F, to reengage and recommit as a body and to champion the community-based organizations and young leaders supported by the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. I'm excited to partner with councilperson Bullock, Chair of the Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee on this legislation, whose leadership on education issues will help inform updates to an organization that's been at the forefront of serving Baltimore City youth. And I'd like to yield to my chairperson.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and Vice Chair Parker. Just wanted to commend Councilmember Parker and his work in this field. I will say it's great to have a council member who's now only serving as vice chair of the Education, Older Adults, and Youth Committee, but who is also on the B C Y F board. One of the things I could point to is that the Youth Fund does some great work in Baltimore, and we can take that great work and make it even better. And I think that's really the intent of this legislation. I appreciate that effort. I know several of us have been around for a number of cycles, including a vice president and council president. But at the same time, we know that there could be some work done. Also, coming at it from a good faith effort, we know that there are some folks who don't think the best of our young people and may not think the best of our city. But the reality is that this is an opportunity for us to invest in our young people. I say that as a father. There are so many of us who are educators, who are parents, who are caretakers, who recognize that our young people need this level of support. But at the same time, as a city and a city council and a legislative body, we also have to be diligent in our task and making sure that all the things are moving in the right direction. So again, I'm looking forward to having some hearings moving forward, some deep conversations and direct conversations with the administrators of the Youth Fund and those who are also benefiting from the services. So again, thank you to the vice chair and thank you to the members of the council who are supportive. Much appreciated.
Thank you. I first want to thank Councilmember Parker and Chair Bullock for their work on this important legislation. I also want to invoke Mayor Jack Young, who was the originator of the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund, someone who cared deeply about young people and made sure the council put its money where its mouth is. This is an important value statement. The city council has been steadfast in our commitment to our children and older adults and families, and it is important every five, ten years to look back at legislation and to make sure it is the best that it can be. In this case, we want to strengthen some of the transparency. We want to make the process fair for everybody that wants to apply, that serves young people. And so I appreciate the diligence and thoughtfulness that went into this bill. I appreciate the partnership across the council. This bill has been assigned to the Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee. Please note, Councilmember Conway as co-sponsor.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-one-zero-one Repeal of Ordinances eight-six dash seven-one-one and nine-two dash one-four-seven Planned Unit Development Mount Clair Junction for the purpose of repealing ordinance eighty-six dash seven-eleven as amended by ordinance ninety-two dash one-four-seven which designates certain properties of business planned unit development, also known as Mount Clair Junction, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Porter.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the desk documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed please say nay. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved. We now move on to bills on second reader. The chair recognizes Councilmember Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Without objection, we will proceed with reading short titles for the remainder of the meeting. We will proceed with reading short titles. We begin with bills from the Land Use and Transportation Committee on second reader. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-four-zero Zoning, Uses, Retail, Small Box Establishment.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September eighteenth. It was recommended as favorable with amendments, but at this time, Mr. President, I motion to recommit this bill to consider additional agency reports.
Without objection, the bill will be recommitted to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. This bill has been recommitted.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-six-two Building Code, Single Exit From Residential Occupancy.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September twenty-fifth. It was recommended favorable with amendments. There are amendments in the members' packets. Amendment one corrects-- so there's four amendments. The first one is technical. It corrects the improperly numbered clause in the article that's being amended. Amendments two and three make substantive changes to the text of the bill, and I can explain that further, but just so you understand. Then Amendment four copies everything else in the bill, including those amendments incorporated in, into the fire code as well. So the bill originally as drafted only dealt with the building code, and then we had to also transfer everything that we were adding into the building code had to be word-for-word copied also into the fire code. So that is what Amendment four does. So Amendment four adds no new functions, outcomes, operations beyond what the bill and Amendments two and three do. And so what Amendment two does, it clarifies the type of building. Type three, so the bill allows for a single-stair construction building to be up to a certain height in types one, two, three A, four, and five construction. If you don't know what these things all are, it's very technical in a way. But type three, while certain others would allow for up to six stories of residential occupancy, like long-term, not rooming houses, not short-term rentals, but long-term residency, up to six stories in some of these other categories, what Amendment two says is that in type three A construction, you can only have five stories of occupancy for residential use. This came from the fire department and was regarded by me as the sponsor and the committee as a friendly amendment. Amendment three expands further on the sprinkler requirements beyond what exists in the sprinkler requirements today to actually look ahead to what we expect to be added sprinkler requirements in the next adoption of the International Code Council's review of the international fire code and the building code. So it's just kind of putting us ahead of the game on even further heightened sprinkler standards. And then there is an amendment that adjusts some tables to reflect this five-story type three A thing. I think that's it. Those are the amendments. Mr. President, I move the amendments favorably.
Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on the committee amendments? Thank you for walking us through those. Councilman Dorsey. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes and the amendments are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable with these amendments.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing, any unreadiness? Councilman Schleifer. No, this one he is moving. This is the single stair. Debate, discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-six-four Zoning, Bulking Yard Requirements, Amendments.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September eighteenth. It was recommended as favorable with amendments. Mr. President, at this time, I motion to recommit this bill to committee to consider additional agency reports.
Without objection, the bill will be recommitted to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. The bill has been recommitted.
City Council Bill two-five dash zero-zero-six-five Zoning, Eliminating Off-Street Parking Requirements.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September eighteenth. It was recommended as favorable with amendments. At this time, I motion to recommit this bill to consider additional agency reports.
Without objection, the bill will be recommitted to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. This bill has been recommitted.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-seven-two Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Units to Two Dwelling Units Each in the R-eight Zoning District, seventeen oh three and seventeen oh nine Edmanson Avenue.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September twenty-fifth. It was recommended as favorable. There are findings of facts on my colleague's desk. I move the findings favorably.
Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on the findings of fact? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the findings of fact say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion passes and the finding of facts are adopted.
Mr. President, I move this bill favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on the bill? All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-seven-seven Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Unit in the R-eight Zoning District, Variance is fifty-five four-one Lafayette Avenue.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September twenty-fifth. It is recommended favorable. There are findings of facts on my colleague's desk. I move the findings favorably.
Any debate on the findings of facts? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion passes and the finding of facts are adopted. Mr. Dorsey.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-seven-eight City Streets, Closing Portions of Certain Streets and Alley's Bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Payson Street, and the Land of National Railroad Passenger Company Amtrak.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September twenty-fifth. It was recommended as favorable. Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-seven-nine Sale of Properties, Certain Streets Lying Within the Area Bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Payson Street, West Lafayette Avenue, and the Land of National Railroad Passenger Corporation Amtrak.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September twenty-fifth. It was recommended as favorable. I move the bill favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-eight-three RPP, Area Thirty, Exception, Fifteen, East West Street.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September twenty-fifth. It was recommended as favorable with an amendment. There is a committee amendment on my colleague's desk. This amendment allows for one visitor permit. That is not correct. The original text of the bill says that only one visitor permit could be issued by Parking Authority to this address where there are two dwelling units, and there is no practical way or reasonable way for Parking Authority to decide which of the two units would get that one parking visitor pass or if they just issued it generally, who would get to use it at any given time. And so the amendment just says that there can be one visitor pass per unit at this one address to which this bill applies.
Sounds--
With that, I move this amendment favorable. Did I get that right, councilman?
Sounds very solomonic in reasoning. Councilmember Torrance.
I'm confused because, wait. In my areas that have these permits, this is not an issue that has come up, nor has it been an issue that we had to legislate. So this is why I'm just being transparent with this council. Why with the Park Amendments Bill, we need to have a broader conversation about parking in general and just not piecemeal it because these inconsistencies, where I have renters who are in Bolton Hill and Reservoir Hill who can't actually get a permit. I just want to make sure that, like, we are really-- I have concerns related to the Fifth Amendment in terms of who gets access to what and who's paying for what related to their property taxes. So, Mr. President, can we recommit this to the council, to the committee, so that we have an understanding of parking in general before we move any legislation?
Councilman Dorsey.
I'm certainly not seconding a motion to recommit this bill.
Councilman Torrance, do you want to make a full motion to recommit?
So, Mr. President, I'd like to recommit this to committee so that we can get a thorough analysis from the Law Department as this only appeals to one property, whereas other residents have purchased permits. And I'm wondering how this impacts us holistically across the city instead of piecemealing it. Mr. President.
So, is-- So, Councilman Torrance, that is a motion to recommit?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second for this motion?
No.
Not even for a second? Okay. We will vote-- Is it voice vote on this one? Okay. All those in favor of Councilmember Torrance's motion to recommit this bill back to committee, please say aye.
Mr. President, I'd like a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Parker. McCray, absent. Dorsey.
No.
Conway.
No.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yeah.
Torrance.
Aye.
Gray.
No.
Bullock.
Staying.
Porter. Blanchard.
No.
Jones.
No.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Aye.
That is three ayes.
You're going to call me.
Oh, President Cohen.
No.
That is three votes in the affirmative?
Three, with three votes in the affirmative and-- I'm not great at math, but I believe twelve in the negative. The motion fails. Councilmember Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I still have a motion on the floor to move the amendment favorable.
Any other debate or discussion before we vote on the amendment? Councilmember Schleifer.
Can we just get some clarity? Because, like, the bill we were just talking about right before was to eliminate parking requirements, right? So that there's--
I don't think so.
A need for less parking. And now, on the next page, we're talking about creating more parking stuff. So can you just explain what-- why we're doing this just for one thing as opposed to make one resident, instead of just across the board, making this a policy? Just like the other policy here, we didn't say eliminate off-street parking requirements for the following addresses. Why are we making this exception just for one address when there's plenty of multi-- you know, multi-homes with different residents living in it and all these different parking zones? So why not just do it across the board?
I believe that is the intent of the chair's bill, but I'm going to defer to Councilmember Blanchard, who sponsored this legislation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, to clarify. So there was a similar bill last term in this neighborhood that this was a deal that was struck between, I believe, and this obviously precedes me, it was struck between the Neighborhood Association and the property owner of that separate property. So this conversation was something, and that was passed as part of a negotiation there. This was a deal that was basically struck between this property owner and that Neighborhood Association in a conversation at the beginning of my term that they both felt good about. To clarify, the parking-- the minimum parking mandate repeal bill addresses the zoning code. This permanent parking in question, this is an RPP, visitor pass question, right? Which can be done via legislation. So I don't know, does that clarify the question or--
Councilmember Schleifer.
It doesn't because if we're just talking about one address and creating additional parking abilities for that one address, why is it not the whole zone? And why is it something that needs to be done legislatively instead of having the Parking Authority grant an extra pass or split instead of having one visitor pass, one home pass, that they each just have one pass and that's it?
Councilmember Blanchard, and then we are going to vote on the motion that is on the floor.
Yeah, so-- hearing multiple ongoing conversations that I'm trying to track here. Yeah, so, so a single-family house can have one visitor pass. So, if you go from a single-family to a multifamily and have one visitor pass to be split between the two families, then it becomes a question of how do you manage the visitor pass, which is why the Parking Authority brought this up as a amendment to the bill, which seemed perfectly reasonable and fine.
All right. Any further discussion or debate on this? Councilman, if you would like to oppose it or provide another amendment, you're more than welcome to. If not, any other discussion or debate on this bill, hearing and seeing none, we will take a vote on the committee amendments. All those in favor of the committee amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The committee amendments are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there any debate or discussion on this amended bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five dash zero zero eight four, city streets, closing a six-foot portion of West Saratoga Street and an alley ten point six-seven feet wide, bounded by Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, and North Green Street.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September twenty-fifth. It was recommended as favorable. Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill is approved. This, I'm sorry, this bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five dash zero zero eight five, sale of property, section of West Saratoga Street, bounded by Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, and North Green Street.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you. This bill was heard on September twenty-fifth. It is recommended favorable. I move the bill favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five dash zero zero eight six, city streets, closing a portion of North Chapel Street.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September twenty-fifth. It was recommended as favorable by the committee. Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five dash zero zero nine two, zoning, conditional use conversion to a banquet hall in the C two zoning district, variance eleven-twenty-three, West Baltimore Street.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Chair recognizes Chair. I love that. Mr. President, this bill was heard on September twenty-fifth. It was recommended as favorable. I move the bill, um, wait, are we on ninety-two? We're on ninety-two. There are findings and facts on my colleague's desk. I move the findings favorably.
Before we vote, is there any discussion or debate on the finding of facts? All those in favor of adopting the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes and the finding of facts are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Try again. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. We're almost done with land use, friends. We now move to bills from the Public Safety Committee on Second Reader. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five dash zero zero one eight, emergency scene of unauthorized persons prohibited.
Chair recognizes Chair Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September sixteenth, and it was recommended favorable with amendments. At this time, I move the amendments favorable.
Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on the committee amendments? All those in favor of adopting the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes and the amendments are adopted.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. We now move to bills on Third Reader. Madam Clerk, please read the bills and call the roll.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five dash zero zero five zero, water bill, tenant right to review, Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five dash zero zero five nine, building fire and related codes, vacant building receivers, failure to sell, Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five dash zero zero six nine, sale of property, eighteen-twenty, North Charles Street, Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five dash zero zero seven four, repeal of ordinance zero-six dash two-two-two, planned unit development, eleven-hundred, Wycomico Street, Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved. And now, committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Budget and Appropriations, Chair McCray, not present. Education, Youth, and Older Adults, Chair Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. The Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee will be having, or will be reconvening, a hearing on Bill Two-Five Zero Zero Two Seven, which is informational hearing, home repair assistance for older adults. That will be on Thursday, October sixteenth, here in council chambers at twelve-thirty P M. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Housing and Economic Development, Chair Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Economic Development Committee will have a legislative oversight hearing, L O Twenty-Five Zero Zero One Eight, on October twenty-eighth at five fifteen. This is Homeless Services. The committee will be evaluating and hearing oversight on homeless services shelters and their conditions.
Thank you, Chairman Torrance. Labor and Workforce Chair Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one time change and one reschedule. The Labor and Workforce Committee will be hearing Bill Two-Five Zero Zero Five One, Labor and Employment, Pregnancy Accommodations. The hearing was originally scheduled for October twenty-second at five-thirty P M. and is now being rescheduled for two P M. And also, the Labor and Workforce Committee will be hearing Bill L O Twenty-Two Five dash zero zero three five, Baltimore City Works. This hearing was originally scheduled for October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, and is being rescheduled for October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five at five-thirty P M. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Land Use and Transportation, Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Starting with the bills that were recommitted to the committee on, um, on October sixteenth at nine A M., the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hear Twenty-Five Zero Zero Four Zero, zoning, uses, retail, small box establishment. On October sixteenth at nine A M., the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hear Twenty-Five Zero Zero Six Four, zoning, Balkan yard requirements, amendments. On October sixteenth at nine A M., the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hear Twenty-Five Zero Zero Six Five, zoning, eliminating off-street parking requirements. On October sixteenth at nine A M., the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hear Twenty-Five Zero Zero Eight Two, planned unit development amendment under Armour Headquarters. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chairman Dorsey, Legislative Investigations, Chair Schleifer?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, October sixteenth at four-thirty P M. for Catalina Rodriguez Lima, Director of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Schleifer, Public Health and the Environment, Chair Porter?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Environment Committee will hold the following hearings. On Wednesday, October twenty-second, beginning at ten A M., the committee will reconvene the hearing for L O Twenty-Five dash zero zero two one, city's response to the opioid crisis, for the purpose of providing a platform for city agencies, healthcare providers, and community advocates to discuss, to continue to discuss ongoing challenges, continue to identify service gaps, and to continue to explore policy solutions to enhance Baltimore's collective response to the opioid addiction and overdose prevention. The first hearing was held on July ninth, twenty-twenty-five. The committee is rescheduling the bill for Twenty-Five dash zero zero one four, Emergency Medical Services Administration of Buprenorphine, for the purpose of requiring Baltimore City Emergency Medical Services to provide buprenorphine to all medical services technicians, allowing emergency medical technicians to administer buprenorphine to an individual under certain circumstances and defining certain terms. The bill was originally scheduled to be heard on October twenty-ninth. The new hearing date is November fifth, beginning at ten A M. Also, on this same date, November fifth, twenty-twenty-five, a voting session will be held for Resolution Twenty-Five dash zero zero five, our informational hearing, availability of naloxone in public buildings, for the purpose of requiring the city administrator, commissioner of the Baltimore Health Department, and the Department of General Services to appear before the city council to present an assessment of the city's readiness to comply with the provisions of Chapter seven-sixty-four of the Acts of the Maryland General Assembly of twenty-twenty-four, Emergency Services Automated External Defibrillator of Naloxone Colocation Initiative, requirements for public buildings by updating its health and safety protocols in all city buildings. On Wednesday, November twelfth, beginning at ten A M., the committee will reconvene the hearing for L O Twenty-Five dash zero zero two-two, Oversight of the Opioid Restitution Funds, for the purpose of assessing the allocation and impact of the opioid restitution funds, ensuring that they are effectively utilized to support evidence-based strategies that benefit the city's most vulnerable population. The first hearing was held on July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. On December, on Wednesday, December tenth, beginning at ten A M., the committee will also hear, will also reconvene, excuse me, the hearing for L O Twenty-Five dash zero zero two-three, Understanding Psychiatric Rehabilitation Programs in Baltimore City, for the purpose of examining the accessibility, effectiveness, and regulatory oversight of P R P services, ensuring that they align with community needs and best practices in mental and behavioral health care. The discussion will continue to focus on the improving coordination, accountability, and equitable service delivery. The first hearing was held on July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. On Wednesday, January fourteen, twenty-twenty-six, beginning at ten A M., the committee will reconvene the hearing for L O Twenty-Five dash zero zero one seven, zero waste, for the purpose of assessing the city of Baltimore's progress toward achieving its zero-waste goal as outlined in the Baltimore Sustainability Plan, examining the effectiveness of current waste reduction, recycling, and composting programs, evaluating challenges in implementation and enforcement, and exploring opportunities for improvements and investment in sustainable waste management infrastructure. The first hearing was held on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. And last but certainly not least, on Wednesday, January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-six, beginning at ten A M., the committee will reconvene the hearing on L O Twenty-Five dash zero zero two four, Oversight of Recovery Homes and Substance Abuse Clinics in Baltimore City, for the purpose of ensuring that individuals in recovery have access to high-quality, safe, and well-regulated recovery homes and substance abuse clinics. This also will be an opportunity to continue to evaluate existing policies, assess provider accountability, and explore opportunities to enhance support systems for individuals in recovery. The discussion will continue to prioritize community concerns, patient safety, and equitable distribution of recovery resources across the city. The first hearing was held on July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. All hearings will be held in the council chamber and are open to the public.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Public Safety, Chair Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting to hear L O Twenty-Five dash zero zero three six on Police Accountability on November fourth, one P M. in council chambers. This is going to be our follow-up hearing to the first hearing that we had about police accountability, including the Police Accountability Board and community partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We now move to regular announcements. Members, please wait until you're recognized to make any regular announcements. Councilman Bullock?
Good evening, colleagues. So, a couple of things I would note. Some of you have talked about the SUEVO five K, Southwest Baltimore. I'm encouraging all of you to come out. It was initially scheduled for Sunday, October fifth, is now being rescheduled for Sunday, November second. Here's the challenge, and then we got a few runners on the council, and some folks who are moving up to being runners. But I would say, I would encourage you to come out and join us. We'll be running through Holland's Market, Union Square, parts, little bit of Pigtown, there's parts of Carroll Park, so we'll be touching a few of these council districts, nine and ten will be covered. And then also, this week, if you have the time this weekend, please feel free to come out to Southwest Baltimore again for the annual Poe Fest. So, this weekend, Edgar Allan Poe, as you know, the literary giant as far as our city's concerned, there's a great footprint and a great festival in Southwest Baltimore. So, if you have the time, come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to be clear that you can come out and support Councilmember Bullock. You do not have to run alongside of him. You can just watch or walk.
And it is at eight o'clock in the morning. So, we'll have a good festive time. We'll be in Union Square Park. It's only three miles. Come out and join us. We'll have fun.
Absolutely brutal. All right. Other regular announcements, Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. Just want to publicly thank Park Heights Renaissance for the wonderful Impact Gala that they gave to the, or for the community Saturday. Gave lots of awards out. Basically, it was just a celebration of what has been accomplished in the last five years with that organization and the work that they continue to do in Park Heights. The second thing is that on Saturday, October the eleventh, my husband, Glenn Middleton Senior, will be honored in a category for the deceased and the work that they have done, the life work that he has done for the city of Baltimore, and that is sponsored by the Baltimore City Historical Society. So, that's Saturday, October the eleventh, at one P M. at the Stony Run, Friends of Stony Run House on Charles Street. You all are invited. And I think another person that I know, Dr. Elena Hicks, which will also be memorialized as well.
Noted. Thank you, Madam V P. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Happening, the second-largest urban park in this country, Dredge Hill Park, on October seventeenth, from seven to ten, is parked in pumpkin. Annual thing, our annual Halloween drive slash walk through the park. Get scared and get a free pumpkin at the end.
Outstanding. Say the date one more time.
October seventeenth, seven to ten, is free to all who want to come.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Madam, Councilmember Porter?
Thank you. Colleagues, on next Monday, October sixth, My Sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, will be hosting our Advocacy Day here at City Hall. So, I encourage you all to come and experience the panels. We wanted to have an opportunity for My Sorority members across the city to learn about what the Baltimore City Council is doing. And so, this will be an opportunity for you all to share your agendas, share anything that you're working on in your districts, and also to hear from the members of My Sorority with regard to things that they are talking about and, you know, their legislative agenda. So, thank you.
Councilwoman, time on that one? What time?
Ten-six.
All day?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
It is a serious matter.
Very good. Anybody else? Councilmember Dorsey?
My mom watches city council meetings sometimes. She's going to be eighty years old this week, so I just want to say happy birthday to my mom.
Hey! That's nice. Anybody else? I see Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Following up the invitation from Councilperson Bullock, Sunday morning's a little tricky for me, but I appreciate the invitation to the run out there. So, we vote, the Ball Running Festival will come up before our next council meeting. I had to double-check, but it's a few weeks before next council meeting. So, that'll be on the eighteenth. So, some of us may be running, others will be cheering. I think it impacts probably the entire city, I assume, in one way or another. Uh, so, some of us may be running, others will be cheering, and I think it impacts probably, uh, the entire city, I assume, in one way or another. Um, so, definitely wanted to name that, and I hope we can, uh, support each other and support our neighbors as they run. Um, uh, this will be after our next council meeting, but just to get it on your calendars, uh, October twenty-fifth is the Great Lantern Parade and Dia de los Muertos Festival in Patterson Park, uh, there in Highland Sound. It's one of the, the best, most unique events in the city, and so, certainly hope you'll come out and, uh, and enjoy it with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock, you running that one too?
Yep.
Figured as much. Uh, Councilman Torrance.
Sorry, great things are happening in seventh district. I forgot to mention the hundred and twenty-fifth celebration of George Washington Carver Vocational Technical Senior High School on October twenty-third. Um, look forward to come out. It is from twelve to six P M. It is also homecoming for our young people. Hopefully, we get a win. But a hundred and twenty-five years of black excellence in West Baltimore.
Excellent. And that's at Carver? Awesome. Anybody else? Any other races that Councilman Bullock will be participating in?
No.
Okay. All right. Oh, Councilman Blanchard.
It, it is actually a race. Uh, so, there you go. Um, while we're talking five Ks, uh, Healthcare for the Homeless is doing theirs. Um, I believe it is actually slightly after the next meeting. I don't have the info in front of me, but since we're throwing five K info out. Um, that one, I think, is also Patterson Park. I am running that one as well, yeah. So, yeah. So, that one and Councilman Bullock's.
Bullock, you stand up for that one too? All right. Make, please make that happen. All right. Anybody else have a race? Nope. All right. Um, happy birthday to Dorsey's mom. And with that, we will turn, turn to tonight's district spotlight, which will come from District Ten, Councilmember Felicia Porter. Take it away, Councilmember Porter.
Thank you, thank you. So, colleagues, um, thank you so much. I'm super excited to talk about, uh, District Ten. It's near and dear to my heart. Um, I wanted to talk through the historical neighborhoods and culture of District Ten. Um, if, most of you don't know, we have many, many individuals in District Ten that have been legacy makers, history makers across the board. So, this is an opportunity to showcase, um, few of the neighborhoods, not all of the neighborhoods, um, with a few notable figures for Baltimore City and the nation. Next slide. So, just to ground everyone, District Ten starts at the most northern part of the stadiums, and then we go all the way down to Curtis Bay. And then, oh, thank you so much. And then we go all the way, um, left towards Wilkins Avenue, where we abut Councilman Bullock's district over on Wilkins Avenue. Next slide. So, first, first community I want to talk through is Pig Town. So, again, circa eighteen thirty, this was a community that was very industrial. And the reason why it got its name Pig Town is because it had pigs actually running up to the slaughterhouse on Washington Boulevard. And that's actually a staple of the Pig Town Festival. Next slide. Pig Town Festival that we just had. So, they, so they actually. They're actually really fun. We just had our festival this year, and one of the great things about District Ten is that, um, you know, we have a lot of, uh, animals in District Ten. I even have a goat named after me called Felicia at Filbert Street Garden. So, it's, the goat's name is Felicia Cheese, and then Ed Risinger, we, so we all have a goat, um, at Filbert Street Garden that I go and visit, and it, it's, he's really fun. Next slide. The next one I want to talk through is Westport. So, the Westport, um, community is near and dear to my heart because it was actually the birthplace of one of the major Negro League teams, the Black Sox, um, in the city. And so, Westport has seen such amazing culture, um, to this day. And right now, they're actually going through a memorial to memorialize, um, the Negro League and, um, the Negro League baseball players that actually lived in Westport. Um, so, it's near and dear to my heart, and it's a opportunity, now that we have, um, the Orioles in the district, it's now the opportunity to merge the Negro League and the Major League Baseball for their advancements in the district. Next one. This is actually, um, a photo from Curtis Bay. So, this is Pennington Avenue. It's a long time ago. I'm around about nineteen thirties. And I got it from the historical archives, and I thought it was really important because not only, um, has Curtis Bay been a pillar in the environmental justice movement, they were, um, they were the economic engine in the most southern part of Baltimore for a very long time. And so, comparing where it is now, this is just a promise of the communities and where they were, and hopefully where they'll get back to one day. Next slide. And last but certainly not certainly not least, which has, um, really, uh, again, near and dear to my heart, community members really embraced me, and they really, really showcased what it means to be raised in Cherry Hill. And so, notable figures that have come from Cherry Hill, we have Billy Murphy, civil rights attorney, former mayor Coach Schmoke. Uh, my grandma is from Cherry Hill. And we also have the Cherry Hill Water and Music and Arts Festival, Waterfront Festival every year, and it's, uh, where I think is world-renowned. And so, there are many people that come across, um, come across this festival every single year. And it just provides an opportunity for arts and culture to be merged with the history and the legacy-making of District Ten. And I wanted to just showcase Navasha Deah, um, one of my, uh, favorite artists, um, because she has a beautiful, uh, beautiful voice, but she is the epitome of everything in Cherry Hill that I believe in the car, the culture, the legacy, and merging it with the arts and culture. So, I brought her here today, um, to just serenade us with ama, her amazing voice. So, I'll turn it over to you, Navasha.
You check, my check, okay. So, thank you so much. I'm actually just coming off the road today, flying in from singing with Sweet Honey in the Rock. We had a three-day, um, shows up in New England. I'm also co-founder and deputy director, I mean, yeah, deputy director of the Youth Resilience Institute, who is the founders and managers of the annual Cherry Hill Arts and Music Waterfront Festival. Our organization's fifteen years this year, and our festival will be ten years. In our organization, um, we research and develop and implement, um, cultural arts, culturally relevant arts and culture in Cherry Hill and the greater South Baltimore community. And I'm also a professional artist that travels the world singing. And so, um, merging that together with the festival is very important. We have a, um, a, a program where we, um, incubator program with artists in South Baltimore as well. So, we have a couple of artists. We have some music videos and things that we'll be surprising you with that relates to the festival, a documentary about our organization, the festival as well. So, I want to share a song. I was thinking, what should I sing that speaks to the times, times we're in? Because my mind is international all the time as well, local and international in itself. And so, it's a song actually written by Dr. Bernice, no, Dr. Esau Barnwell from Sweet Honey in the Rock, who retired. I actually auditioned to sing with them after she retired. So, it's called Chinese Proverbs. When there is light in the soul, there is beauty in the person. When there is beauty in the person, there is harmony in the home. When there is harmony in the home, there is honor in the nation. When there is honor in the nation, there is peace in the world. When there is light in the soul, there is beauty in the person. When there is beauty in the person, there is harmony in the home. When there is harmony in the home, there is honor in the nation. And when there is honor in the nation, there is peace in the world. Thank you.
Drop that mic. Thank you so much, uh, Navasha, for your beautiful voice, as well as for an awesome festival every single year. Thank you, Councilmember Porter, for reminding us of all the great neighborhoods that exist within South Baltimore. Appreciate you lifting up Cherry Hill, Westport, Curtis Bay, all the great neighborhoods. Um, with that, there being no further business, the next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at five P M. This concludes the fifteenth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council.